Hey folks. We party people, we are on air.
Elysium flies out of Portsmouth.
Okay, that is the date. Hello, everybody, and I think we are recording this handy dandy workshop. Today is, if I'm not mistaken, Monday, February 10th, 2025. We are having a workshop with the fire department. We have some fire experts here. And we have a PowerPoint. And thank you for supplying that to us in advance. And happy Monday, everybody. Go team. Would you like to present your PowerPoint? What is your... Yes, okay, great. Welcome.
Thank you for having us. We want this not to be a presentation, if you will. That's why we didn't want to stand up at the podium. So at any point, if there's questions, please say, hey, wait a minute. Further explain something. We'll go through the slides. There's only, as you've seen, seven of them. So there's not... They're kind of just placeholders. But at the end, we can certainly bring up whatever you guys have questions on as far as what the fire department can offer for fire and medical services. Because sometimes when we've talked to the public, it's been, geez, we didn't know you guys did that or did this. And we want to make sure that you guys are up to speed when people ask those questions for us. So, here we go.
Great.
Wanted to hit just a few slides. You guys, and I did hand it out again. I know Matt sent you our year-end report. But I think it's important for this slide, I'm going to stop for actually a second. Does everybody know Andy to my right? I know Mike does.
Yes.
Andy Turcot. He is one of our deputy chiefs, firefighter, paramedic. Gerald Cross, probably more of you guys know him. He's a firefighter EMT. He's been with the department thirty-something years. And he's been in the public safety field for a long, long time. So there's some talent. At least through those two guys, I'll say, as far as what they've offered the town. And I know, again, Gerald's known a lot of you guys for quite a while. So, back on track. It's important to know where we are for the statistics. And just a couple breakouts of those. Most communities are in the eighty-plus percentage range for EMS calls versus all the different types of fire calls that there are. We don't have nursing homes of large scale here. So we don't have what some other towns have for a lot of those responses. There certainly are some assisted living facilities within the town. They're just not really large. So the good thing is we can take care of the residents more frequently than trying to support the bigger responses going to some of those larger facilities. So because of saying that, we're more lower percentage-wise, based on a lot of the communities around a sixty-something percent. I don't have the exact number. But that says a lot compared to, again, everybody saying, oh, you're eighty-plus percent, you're more EMS than fire. We are doing a lot of things. And I may have, at the end of, there's likely going to be some time, but just some of the pictures of the training that we do. Because it isn't just going to big fires and going to medical calls. There's a lot of other things that we serve the community. 2024, last year, we probably did about 200 less calls than what we did last year in that calendar year. That is a bigger increase when you see that we did fourteen hundred calls, wherever it is, we don't have that total. But doing fourteen hundred, you'll see in your sheet there, that's a huge jump for us to try to make those pieces happen regularly. I don't have the number up there. But it's somewhere in the effect of on emergency responses, we have twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent of the time, we have two incidents going on at the same time. So meaning they're not well-scheduled emergencies. So...
Bob?
When it rains, it pours.
Kind of the Cliff Notes of that.
Like a hot monitor.
Yes. You've got the right staff here.
You might be in trouble.
Eli, did you have a question for us?
I was saying, so... Yeah, so the Cliff Notes, yeah, also giving Bob a hard time since he doesn't know how to silence his phone, is we're down 200 calls, right?
Up.
Up 200 calls, okay. Just want to clarify. That's all.
Yep.
Chief, for a few years, we had a couple, like frequent flyers when it came to rescue, older people that were on regular basis. I mean, I think one person we called in like thirty, forty, fifty times in a year. Do you have any more of those?
Frequent flyers probably isn't the right term to use. But yes, and it varies whether their health may change to the point where they move into a better assisted living facility. But right now, we don't have a ton. We go down to some of the senior housing on Route One, different places like that. We might be going into that subdivision, if you will, but not necessarily to the same person. We have some that, yeah, we go down, lift assists that may happen. And some of those are like, shoot, it's not really a medical emergency. They just need a little help getting up. But it doesn't matter. If they call, we're coming to make that happen. But right now, we don't have a person that lived on Farrell Avenue that you used to work with and others of that nature.
And I think that, we spoke early about there are places like Freeport that have a number of nursing homes there. But they have, if I remember correctly, they still have a number of dedicated rescues just for those trips and their...
They don't have the non-emergency transports like they did. They were running three ambulances nonstop. And because of the staffing shortage, trying to find people to do that, and you can probably explain it out better, that they are not doing that same type of service. So do you want to further?
No, I think you hit it on the head that staffing was a major drive for that change, but also reimbursements, the cost to do those calls, just more keeping up with, or the reimbursements are not keeping up with the costs to provide those services.
Thanks, Andy.
So on this slide, I think, I'm trying to figure out what it is. But this slide with the incident types, we have fires at ninety-nine. And then with the pie chart, we have twenty-five percent. And if you add up, that math doesn't work. But on the, you know, in the instance that you gave us, the fires were four ninety-nine. Is that extra four hundred, sort of the explosive overheat, service hazmat, good intent, false alarm? Is all that sort of count under the fire? And everything else of that nine-twenty-four is just the straight-up medical? And it's just sort of a broken down more in the chart on the left as opposed to in the handout that you gave us with the four ninety-nine for fires?
Yeah, I'm seeing that the percentages are slightly off there. But yeah, if I understand your question right, there's medical is medical. And then we have the breakdown of the fires goes further into, and it's the National, it's called EMFRs, but the National Fire Incident Reporting System. So it's a federal program that we go, we report to the state fire marshal's office of what it is that we've done for calls. And sometimes trying to squeeze a certain type of call into the right category isn't always there. But yes, under the fires, one that's ninety-nine, that could be a stove, you know, a fire on top of a stove, to a full-on structure fire, to that. So there's a range that's there. The hazmat one, we were talking before, that doesn't mean that we had to put on the big hazmat suits to go rescue somebody. It could be a carbon monoxide or some type of hazardous where we have to go onto that immediately dangerous atmosphere to do that. And we have the metering equipment to do that. So, not sure if that answered. One of the big things, and I'm sure Bob, because we've had those discussions before about the number of fire alarms that we respond to. When there is a number of, you know, one hundred and forty that's up there, that does, those are false alarms. Truly, there's a bad detector. You look up on the ceiling here over our heads and see one that's hanging out of the ceiling. That could go off, that could be a bad detective. We just had one down to Dr. Green's office down off of Route One. We go there because he's got some detectors that he's working on. What is misunderstood sometimes, if we're responding to an alarm sounding, it might be because there is a fire on the stove or in the room, and the alarm's doing its job. So it comes in as a fire alarm sounding. Well, we get there and it's like, wow, this is actually one. So the category would change from false alarm to the ninety-nine number that was showing in the fires. We didn't have a lot of big weather events last year. Sometimes we could have that where we go to power lines down. If we have a big ice storm, whatever, that certainly can bring that number up. We just didn't have a lot of that last year. And that's the value of the state fire marshals. We keep our own stats as well. But the fire marshal's office does the annual reports, and they can really show what the entire state is doing, not just, you know, what we're doing immediately here. So...
Are you sending out a bill for a response to a fire alarm?
We are not. We did try that probably fifteen years ago. And because of what the rate was, it was in the three-fifty, four-hundred-dollar range, trying to chase the people down that wouldn't pay, the insurance wouldn't follow it. We finally said, and that's with Bill Stiles being in the insurance industry, he's like, you guys are spending more time on administrative work trying to chase down that money than probably it's worth. Medical calls, we hire medical reimbursement services as a company in Wyndham. A lot of towns in the area use them. That's easy. We have not, at this point, to segue off the billing of fire stuff, if somebody calls and says, look, I can't afford to pay my medical bill, right now, we're saying, don't worry about it. We don't want people not calling 911 because, oh, my gosh, I can't afford the bill, so I'm not going to call that. Sometimes we'll waive just their deductible. Insurance company's going to pay, you know, everything but their deductible. Okay, that's great. Sometimes people out of principle, I'm not paying any of that because I pay taxes. And again, we're right now saying, okay, we're not going to have bill collectors showing up at your house to say we want our money that way. So alarm soundings, there are, there is rather, an ordinance in town that says if you have, and it's based on a calendar year, but if you have more than three false alarms, false alarms within a year, the next one starts, I'm guessing here, but like at a hundred dollars, and then the next one, one hundred and twenty-five, et cetera. Dr. Green might be in that situation coming up this year. But January first, it starts all over again. We were going to 12 Ground Road quite a while last summer because they had faulty detectors in the attic during the hot, humid time of year. And we were going there all the time. And that's, again, we're taking services away from being able to, since we're a one-deep department. So it's not a lot, but we try to pursue every little bit that we can. EMS billing-wise, we pay six percent to whatever's collected by the town. And I want to say we took in two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars maybe in EMS billing. So it's not a lot, but that certainly, in the grand scheme, helps what we're doing.
Just to dig a little bit deeper, what are your cohorts, North Yarmouth, Yarmouth and Falmouth do?
They're doing the same thing. A lot of them are actually using the same company that we're using. And they've stayed at the six percent rate of them billing us, but keeping up with what the insurance world will do. Sometimes we'll add, we used to, if you use a Band-Aid, it's this much. If we give you oxygen, it's another. If we check your blood sugar, it's another. Now it's BLS, ALS-1, ALS-2 type of levels, and that's what we charge out for that level. If there are terrible outcomes, if you will, on the calls, those are not getting a bill, if you understand what I'm saying. It's, families been through enough, they don't need to also get a bill from the town. So again, that's what we've been doing. We've been billing for medical calls for quite some time.
Go for it.
I have a couple of questions. One is on the false alarm and false calls. I see it's like almost ten percent of the total. I had one of those recently, unfortunately. And I'm wondering how much of this is a, like a technical issue? Or if it's kind of just people needing education, like I did? And now I know that if you have a connected alarm system and you have Ring, for example, or some other service where, you know, you have someone monitoring and you go to test that without calling them first, they will immediately call you guys and not call you and ask, you know, because it's carbon monoxide alarm, for example. There is no call you and make sure, because you could be dead by the time, like, you know, they call you or you guys come. So does it break out like that at all on these false alarms? Like, do you know how many of those are?
We could certainly go search that data to get more of the breakdowns. But again, if it's a humidity problem, that, there's a beam in the detector, and that doesn't know if a spider has crossed that beam or if it's humid, whatever. Again, if it's smoke from a burnt food call, the detector did its job. If you're trying to be proactive in testing your system and you forget that it's monitored, we're coming. And we will always, always come. Again, the, excuse me, fire alarm call we just had a couple hours ago, I'm going to send at least something to verify. Because I don't know if the person's an arsonist and they call up and say, everything's all set here, you know, keep your trucks back. We're going to go make sure that there are. Sometimes people get embarrassed because, oh, my God, everybody's going to see all the fire trucks at your house. Maybe you had that, I don't know.
I did.
People will call, but we're going to at least try to send one. We won't come in screaming lights and sirens to something to that effect. But we just had to make sure that people aren't being too proud and embarrassed. Sometimes we don't realize that, okay, you might be feeling okay on a carbon monoxide incident, you can't smell it. So we're coming and just understand that our lungs are a lot bigger than animals. So if you have cats and dogs, those are going to be much more impacted. So we're going to show up to the calls, we'll have our meter, and we'll say, yep, everything's all set.
Is, I think that response protocol, and maybe Matt, you can verify this, but the police do the same thing, right? I mean, I know that when my horrendous son did the SOS on our phone at six o'clock in the morning, poor Tony Kluki showed up, even though, like, I got on the phone with dispatch and was like, no, it's okay. But that's sort of a standard protocol, right? Like, just to your point of the arsonists and to your point, they didn't know my, you know, if I was a kidnapper or...
If you don't tell them how old you are, they send somebody.
That's a guilty look.
Lot of crying right there. But it's kind of standard, right?
Yeah, it'd be standard. I've done it myself. And, yeah, they'll call you back. And you've got to be pretty convincing to not have somebody show up.
Come and check.
Yeah, it's, uh, safety, safety first, I guess, would be the way to look at it. Just in case something inadvertently does go awry, it's better to have people there.
Trust but verify.
Yep, exactly.
The words of Ronald Reagan. Denise, do you have more questions?
I have one more question. On the front, talking about how of the nine-hundred-and-twenty-four EMS calls, seventy were motor vehicle accidents, and they're increasing on our higher-speed roadways. Are there particular danger zones where this is repeating specifically? Where, you know, talking about a roundabout or, you know, like a four-way stop or something like that? I'm wondering, in these increasing accidents, are you seeing repeat customers? Is Bob...
You want me to answer that?
Sorry, Mike. I mean, I know, I know, I know that one.
I'll be honest with you. I was out on the main turnpike with Andy. I forget what day it was. We had a five-car accident with a trailer truck involved. We had another car accident with a gentleman that had low sugar, thought it was a stroke at first. There's three of them in the ambulance. The guy's down over a thirty-foot embankment covered with snow. Three of them are trying to carry a two-hundred-and-fifty-pound guy up over the bank. So I went down and helped him carry him up over the bank. The main turnpike is probably your worst danger zone, other than two-ninety-five. I mean, you know, I got to think, out of those seventy accidents, probably fifty of them are out there, to be honest with you. I mean, and it's just, on the main turnpike, the Cumberland police don't respond to an ambulance call out there. So they're kind of out there relying on the troopers. And it's, you know, a lot of times the troopers aren't dressed to go down over the bank. You know, they're wearing shoes and, but...
Campaign hats.
And I would have guessed that this, Mike, you know, he would want to get cold. But I'm thinking that the seventy is low. Is the seventy a low number? I mean, I'm...
I don't have the exact...
I mean, obviously, the wintertime, it's hectic out there, especially with the storms that we've had lately. But I mean, you know, it's just...
We'll call that a segue into the next slide because...
Just a quick aside.
You know as well as I do, I mean, there's three or four intersections in the town of Cumberland that are actually a problem.
I don't want to get into roundabouts and rotaries and for you guys to talk about. Yes?
Just one quick question. And Matt, I don't know if this touches on what we were talking about earlier, but if there is an accident on ninety-five and it's in Cumberland, is the Cumberland, is the Cumberland ambulance going to that or no?
So that's, your great minds think alike. That's where I was going with that. We go up to the turnpike a lot because from the Service Plaza or Blackstrap Road South, we're covering all the way down to Falmouth, exit fifty-three. We'll also get on there, the sign shop of the Gray Service Plaza, and we'll go up to Gray. Conversely, Falmouth is coming from exit fifty-three or down Route one hundred by the Hannafords and that area. They'll come all the way up to the Service Plaza. So yes, absolutely. And that's why we don't go as often to I-295 is because we have Falmouth come on the northbound side, their station is right there. And again, conversely, Yarmouth can jump on at exit seventeen. The other good thing with Yarmouth jumping on is sometimes, you know, people will call in saying, hey, I just went by an accident. By the time the dispatcher picks up, that person is a mile further away. And hey, I'm going by door mapping now or whatever. And it's like, Yarmouth can see those things coming as well as Falmouth. But we still send our heavy rescue out there because those two roadways terrify me because they are so, so dangerous. Mike has an exact example of himself getting into an accident out there just because cars are going by us at such a high rate of speed. There could be every light out there going. We talked about lights this morning with Bob. People don't care. They are flying by us at eighty-five plus miles an hour. And again, Ronnie, I'm sure you see the same thing. It is terrifying. But we might send the ambulance, we might send the engine, or we might send, on a car accident, we send a fire engine in case the car's on fire. Our heavy rescue's got all the extrication equipment than the ambulance. Sometimes it's one, two, all three, wherever that may be. Again, depending upon where it's at. Again, our heavy rescue goes on I-295 with those other two towns in case they need more extrication equipment or even just traffic management to help block, what we call block lanes. So it's, the mutual aid isn't just going to Falmouth if they have an alarm sounding at the Falmouth Country Club or whatever. It's definitely on those two highways to get that. We want to get out, take care of, mitigate the incident, and then get off the roadway. And this is going to get really interesting, if you will, for us when the Tuttle Road Bridge goes into the construction mode, which I think is sometime this year. Because it's just a scary, and I'm not talking necessarily on the Tuttle Road side, but just underneath when they're going to have the, we've all been through the construction zones up to Seventeen now, Johnson Road, Buckton Road just got done. So there's a lot of those hazards that really, really, really concern us. And if you can't tell, the highways terrify me getting our crews out there. So, and I don't know why this slide isn't showing up the right way. I'm sure it's the author of how to put these darn PowerPoints together. But the quick number is, in 2023 is the lower right. We had, we put mutual aid into four categories. We have some that is called automatic. So that means, and to use the Highway Bailey as the example, if there's a call on any of the road, either of the highways, it doesn't matter. We, it's us going with an ambulance and Falmouth coming with an engine or whatever it might be, that's automatic. The dispatcher picks up the phone. We have different dispatch centers than Yarmouth and Falmouth does. So our dispatcher is immediately calling them to say, hey, we're all going together to this incident. So that's automatic. It's already planned, we have signed agreements. The state requires mutual aid. But we've gone even further than that. From Falmouth all the way up to Topsom, actually, it started back over forty years ago with the mutual aid pact that we have. And we sign that every five years to say, from the Topsom chief all the way down through, we're saying, yep, we're still going to do this product together. We amended it the last time because some part of that was only mentioning regular mutual aid, if you will, and we've added the automatic aid. It also gives the option, if it's during a snowstorm and we normally have the automatic, the other town can say, look, it's a blizzard out. We're not sending our trucks when they've got all their own accidents that they're trying to manage at that time. So there is some give and take with that. But with the mutual aid, right now, as you can see, doing, we are doing basically one mutual aid call a day, one call a day of mutual aid. That might be us going to Yarmouth for a call. Last week, we went to North Yarmouth Academy because they didn't have a crew available. They were on a medical call. They did have one other, their firefighter that was there. But they called one of us, one of our engines. So I went over with the engine and it was like, well, we're usually the ones getting the help. And we were the ones who provided that service. And again, that was last Friday, I think, through that very abnormal on just an alarm sounding. We go, and I'll go back to the slide about ambulances, responses in a minute. But automatically and manually, if you will, we are getting mutual aid or doing mutual aid all the time, all the time. Some of that might be, hey, we called Yarmouth. We know that it's likely not a big call. We'll cancel them pretty quickly on. We don't want to have them sending their trucks if we know that that's not likely going to be a big incident. If we get there and it's like, yep, it's not something, then go. On Route One, we have Falmouth that comes up to Tuttle Road on Route One and Route Eighty-Eight southerly. I'm sorry, Falmouth is from the Falmouth Line to Tuttle Road. Yarmouth covers from the Yarmouth Line, exit fifteen area, all the way down to Tuttle Road. They get to those scenes prior to us. We have the key boxes that are there, the NOCS boxes with their keys in them because we don't want them to have to wait to get into the Yarmouth bedroom area. There's a new building down there. We want them to be able to gain access immediately. A stat that, sometimes the numbers can work or miss parts. If we go to Yarmouth for a mutual aid call like we did last week, right? That's one mutual aid call. If we have a call, say it's down on Route One and it's a reported, you know, fire, whatever it might be, we have both Yarmouth and Falmouth coming at the same time. But it's still one mutual aid number because that's just how it fits, if you will, into the system. So sometimes it doesn't represent all the help that we're getting versus what we're providing. So, any other thoughts on mutual aid? I'm going to go back, the other back. This is the EMS as far as what we received most recently. So, and those numbers are off a little bit, I think, from what was submitted, but it's basically in the same area. So basically, a hundred... in the same area. So basically a hundred times last year, we called for an out of town ambulance because ours was already committed on another call, the concurrency, um, that we talked about. Of those one hundred calls, half of that, um, those ambulances had to transport. Uh, I'll give you a close, um, example of that. Um, my wife, uh, a couple weeks ago was having, uh, difficulty breathing because of having pneumonia and whatever else. Even the fire chief can't call up my crew, uh, hey, get down here. They're like, yeah, we're up to West Cumberland on a call right now. Uh, we're not available. Um, Yarmouth responded. Go into Google Maps sometimes, but we never drive over the speed limit. All right, can we all decide on that one? Uh, but even still, it was over ten minutes and my wife is laying on the floor trying to breathe. And we had to wait for an out of town ambulance. Uh, if one of you can hold your breath for ten minutes, then we even say, you know what, maybe we don't need to look at that staffing model. But that's what we're asking. We are certainly not offering that much service. We go to Gray, um, and certainly the other towns, uh, for calls, but we are certainly calling for mutual aid ambulances quite regularly. Yes, Andrew?
So this might be jumping far, far ahead, but what is the, the ideal standard, you know, if you take cost out of it, which is ridiculous, obviously, but if you take cost out of it, what's the ideal standard for response time in a town such as ours with, you know, our population, uh, the geography and all, you know, is the ideal five minutes? You know, you're talking about, you know, ten minutes because we had to get somebody from Yarmouth to come in. So if we had the staffing and the equipment to get it to where you'd be like, yep, you know, I, I'm good with us taking X amount of time to get there. A, like, what is that time? And B, what is the delta between where we are now and where we'd have to be to make sure that we got to that, you know, ideal world?
To answer the, the last part of your question, uh, if we were to add, it's gonna still be out of central station, not up to the west end, at least right now, because it's a perfectly located station for our community. Um, but, uh, to back up, if you were to call, when a person calls nine-one-one, the dispatcher has ninety seconds. That is the state goal, directive, whatever you want to call it, before they're pushing the tone button to notify us. So we've already lost a minute and a half there. The crew, we want them to get on the road, uh, within a minute or so, probably a minute and a half, if they have to put all of their firefighting gear. And if it's a fire call, we make them put it on, uh, before we leave. All right, you're at a minute and a half and we haven't even got on the street yet, um, to do that. Then it's certainly, if you live at, um, right across the street from the firehouse or, uh, again, because we only have the one ambulance on duty, those two people, two and a half, cause we were able to get, uh, two positions, uh, at the last minute last year from you guys. Thank you. Um, if it's up on Skilling Road, it's, what's that travel time to that? But our goal is gonna be that seven minute range. And we know that, uh, the full-time side or career side's going to be there cause they don't have to drive, uh, to the station. The value on the call company side, though, is say Mike was on the, uh, fire department and there's, there's a call on Greeley Road, doesn't mean they have to drive all the way to the station and then turn around, get on a fire truck and go back. So the call company does help, uh, with that part. So there's a lot of moving pieces with that. But definitely with that full-time, uh, staff that's in the station, we want them to, as a goal average, to be arriving, uh, within that seven minute, uh, timeframe. Is that of an accurate number?
Yeah, when you look at the seventeen-twenty standards, they look at that seven fifty-nine, uh, to meet ninety percent of the time. Now, we looked at the data a couple of weeks ago and we were just under nine minutes. The, when we look at the mutual aid coming in, that jumps it up to about thirteen minutes. And on a normal sort of run of the mill call, that's not high acuity, so cardiac arrest, stroke, trauma, or a structural fire, you know, it's not as bad of times when you look at the, the total times. But when you look at those strokes, cardiac arrests, those minutes matter. And those are the ones that we really need to get there quickly if we're gonna improve their outcomes. And that's only looking at one call. Now, if we have simultaneous calls, then obviously, um, the, the outcomes are gonna be much different long-term. And that's, I think, the part of what we've been struggling with is the ability to be able to handle a basic run of the mill call with that limited staffing. Um, and that's just your run of the mill EMS call. If there's something high acuity, we certainly need a little more staff. And then when you look at, uh, and the chief's gonna talk about this, but when we respond to a fire call or a hazmat call, we have minimum, uh, staffing that needs to be assembled prior to us being able to even make entry. And right now, um, it's very rare that we can, we can meet those standards within a reasonable period of time.
So we're at nine-ish.
Correct.
Minutes for response and the goal is seven. If it's seven fifty-nine, that's eight. So let's, let's say seven.
Correct.
Um, would staffing change that, you know, close that two-minute delta or is it geography?
It's mainly gonna be geography. Um, I would say the biggest issue is gonna be geography. That, that is our biggest challenge. Um, now with that being said, if it is a fire call and we have to assemble outside with, you know, for five minutes until we get additional staffing, that's certainly gonna add a layer to it and we're not keeping track of that at the time right now.
Right. But, 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 you know, time on site is nine-ish minutes.
Correct, yeah.
Right now, and geography is sort of the, the thing.
Yep.
But then that, that doesn't, then address the issue of you got the call in Skilling Road and then you got the call on eighty-eight.
Yep.
Um, and so realistically, for, you know, you could have thirteen calls at once. You, you never know.
Yeah.
Um, but realistically, given the, the calls that you get, you know, you need to really respond to two, three, four calls at once, realizing that you, you can't physically do that. Um, so what staffing level would be the, all right, you know, we feel good we can get to that ninety percent or whatever the, the number is that would get you to be able to say, yeah, I, I feel good that we can respond to the realistic calls that we're gonna, you know, number of calls we're gonna get at the same time. You know, we're, we're here. What's, what's here that gets us there? What, what's that difference?
So, so I think ideally, when we look at this long-term, you know, because we would love to say, hey, let's pull the Band-Aid off and do it now, but we also have to be pretty strategic and cost-conscious. Um, if we can get to four on a shift right now that buys us time, but ideally, within the next, you know, three to five years, we really should be close to six. That allows us to handle more than one call. So for example, we can cross-staff that second ambulance as well as having an, an engine available, but it also allows us to reciprocate that mutual aid with our neighboring communities. Um, and, and I would say, if you have any other thoughts to that, again, it's long-term. I think it's, it's good that we talk about this stuff so we can develop a plan.
So we're, forgive my ignorance, we're at two right now and you realistically hope to go to four with the idea of in the future, go to six. Uh, full, full-time, twenty-four, seven, you know, you got eventually six people at the firehouse waiting to, to go out. Is that, I'm just.
Correct. And we would still need to rely on our, on our call company. It's still gonna be an integral part of the department, whether you had six or ten or, or whatnot. You still would need a robust call company as well.
We, just one, one thing to add on that Denise. Um, the, um, the call company is a, uh, super part of it, but you would mention that there's on two, we have a four-shift system and because we were, um, given the, the extra two hundred thousand dollars that, uh, at the last minute that you guys did for us, that added two more positions. So we have two of the four shifts with two people and then the other two are with three people, um, right now. So, and we can talk a little bit about what our hope is to discuss and think about this year budgeting-wise, but we'll get to that towards the end. But it's two and then three, and I'm sorry Denise.
Okay. Um, have those two positions been filled?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Yep.
Trying to keep track, so that's good. Um.
We, we just did a mini drill school, if you will, where we hired, we had two vacancies, uh, from people leaving and then the two new ones. And it's trying to find help and, and valued help all at the same time is not, uh, super easy. We're very happy that we were able to hire one of our college, uh, students. Uh, she's gonna be a huge value and anybody that's been around for quite a while. Doug Pride, uh, was a school teacher, um, up to Greeley High School. And he's not gonna go the twenty-five-year route with us, uh, cause he's a retired teacher, but he's gonna give us a few years. And here's a guy who retired from the school, um, said, you know what, hey, I want to try to give back to the community. And the more he's done, he's like, wow, this is really cool. Um, and here he is as a full-time person for us.
Okay. Um, you mentioned that the biggest challenge is geography. So the idea is with more people, do you have them just like kind of staged places? Like how does, if you have just the central station where most people are, you know, working out of, how does that solve the geography issue or help alleviate it?
Um, the automatic mutual aid and, and without going into a thousand, um, slides tonight, um, if you were to take, um, from maybe Middle Road, but at least Interstate two ninety-five east, um, there is automatically trucks coming. And like I said earlier, they're getting there before, uh, we are. We're not worried about whose name is on the side of the truck. It's whoever can get there first. There's, it's hard to fit everything in, uh, exactly. But again, there are, you know, North Yarmouth is calling, uh, for trucks. We're all going, but for that part in town, uh, we are definitely, um, calling for that, um, service. The other part is, and West Cumberland is, uh, much better protected, if you will, with fire hydrants. That's been in place for fifteen years. I don't know if time flies. And it's going to be more added, uh, with part of the, the new subdivision that's, that's going in. But we still have automatic, uh, tank trucks coming from Falmouth, uh, in Gray, so we can get that water there as immediate, um, as we can. So we're trying to fill those void spaces as well. But when we looked at where to build the station, it was when, when you guys authorized that, uh, I think it was opened in two thousand eighteen, seems like yesterday, but, um, that was the best spot. It's a very tight lot, but it's the best one, uh, best location for us to try to get that immediacy, uh, trucks on the road.
So I know we're not supposed to be talking about roundabouts, but, um, if we are, to your point, Andy, thinking six is where your ideal, that's on current state, right?
Correct.
Cause I'm just, if this roundabout does get improved, and not that I imagine it's gonna look like Route one overnight, but if all of a sudden there are lots more businesses on Route one hundred, does that then mean that like the, there's the potential of getting more calls because it's more built out from a commercial perspective? Or is that not a thing?
Well, commercially, commercially, um, there might be that, but I believe the idea of the roundabout is that there's supposed to be less frequency of, of motor vehicle accidents.
Yeah, sorry.
Maybe I misunderstood.
No, I think I was just more thinking like you have an incident at like Walmart or early, or you know.
More, more people, more calls type of thing.
More people, more calls. Yeah, that's what I was, so I was curious if your, your six ideal number is based on our, like kind of the current state, what our current needs are versus are we also projecting for the future? Because as, if West Cumberland does begin to kind of get built out on Route one hundred, that's also potentially is something that we should be thinking about long-term.
Yeah.
No?
I would agree.
Also, when you mentioned, we don't really have assisted living homes and, you know, strokes and heart attacks are time-sensitive. Bob, you wanna, you know, look into assisted living and things like that in town. So I think that's something else that we really need to look at is long-term, um, and kind of not putting ourselves in a position where we're playing catch-up and we're like having a crisis.
Yeah.
So kind of aligning that and looking forward, you know, X amount of years. Good. So.
I, I have to throw in, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I have to throw in, we did just have an accident, um, up, uh, by your place a, a few weeks ago on a Sunday night. And because the call company is much more available nights, uh, and weekends, uh, we had fifteen people there that night. If that was to happen on a Wednesday morning, it would be, uh, a lot less, um, to do that. So it waivers, uh, time of day. Uh, that doesn't mean that, um, we've had incidents where, excuse me, a truck from West Cumberland was the first truck to lower Tuttle Road because, oh, it's a beautiful Saturday and people are out skiing and snowmobiling, whatever. That part is not controlled and the fire that occurred down the street, the two people we had on duty were on a medical call at the hospital. So there was nobody home other than me pulling up saying, wow, this is an interesting day, but.
Just one thing about the roundabout, the experts from the state told us that the severity of the accidents in a roundabout are much less. Like right now, when there's an accident there, it's a fifty mile an hour vehicle that's hitting a vehicle that's just barely moving. And the last one that Danny referred to was, I think, two or three got transferred, transported to the hospital. With a roundabout, they're gonna have to slow down and the impact will be much less severe. We got seventy-some new houses coming, which is probably a hundred and forty new people traveling through that intersection every day. And I gotta think, you know, people are gonna move here from abroad that aren't familiar with it. I mean, and I don't know what the status of the roundabout is. I know we're waiting on the feds still, but I mean, the severity, like the other night, I, I think you transported three to the hospital, Danny, that night. Uh, Gerald, were you there?
I was there. We had, uh, two of our ambulance and staff there, like full-time, most staffed. Plus we pulled one out of West Station that was staffed, that we had from call members and we had Falmouth there.
And, I mean, I, I was there and it's bad when there's an adult involved in an accident, but when there's a child, it's four times worse. I mean, and you just, you can't help but feel sorry for a kid, you know? They're just such an innocent victim. I mean, and there was a small child that night that had a goose egg on the side of his head from the window, I mean, so. And, and the one before that that ran into the dump truck, why she didn't get killed, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, it just mind-boggling. I mean, had she been one split second quicker, she probably would have been deceased. I mean, that's how severe that one was, but.
We've had a lot at that intersection as well as Middle Road at Tuttle Road.
Yeah.
Um, again, uh, forgive my ignorance on this, you know, you, you mentioned the call company. Roughly, how big is that? You know, and truly, where are they sort of spread out, ideal scenario, everybody's at home, just sitting, waiting, you know, in their car, waiting to go, kind of thing. Where are they? Are they like mostly West Cumberland, mostly on the forest side, mostly in the center, wherever?
Um, I can answer this one, right?
Half of them live on Forest Lake, but.
There's a lot of, right now in Florida, but. There's a lot of.
Their response time's a little bit slower.
Yeah, can be. Um, there's a lot of training. Um, it's, there's a, a, a big range of this person can do firefighting EMS work. They're certified. Bring it on, they can do anything. We might have a person that can just drive the truck and, and pump, pump the truck. That's as, as important because if I've got, you know, a couple of full-time people that show up, I don't need to have one necessarily if there are call company people there that can operate, um, the fire truck. We also have, you know, fire police, people that are helping with traffic. So there's usually, and this is part of our, you know, marketing, you know, trying to bring people on to consider the department, that we do the, everybody's got a different role, um, for us, uh, to do, but there are differences. And, and there are, like Ronnie, uh, humorously said, the west, um, end of, uh, town has a lot. And maybe we'll go with, because there's a station there, there's more call company, but there's not as many on the east side of, of the town. And some of that is, and we have a few that are, um, further to the east. It might be a long travel time to get up to the station. Maybe they don't feel comfortable being the first one. The analogy I gave with Mike arriving first on a Greeley Road call. Some people like, I, I want nothing to do, to be that first person that's gonna try to mitigate this emergency and figure out, do I need a lot of stuff or is, is not, not, not a lot required? So it's all over. That's not, there's no easy way, cause it is changing, um, all, all the time. But it's a white collar community, not to say that in a negative sense. But it's a white-collar community, not to say that in a negative sense, but it just takes a lot of town. It's fabulous that we have parents that are coaching their team, their kids' sports and things like that, so. I'm not that old, in 1986, when I started, you had to do six trainings, six meetings and six calls. That's all you had to do. Now we're requiring a lot more, just because of the intensity, if you will, or the depth of training, we took a lot more risks at the time, and we're pushing a lot more onto our call company. Because again, it's not just fire EMS work, it might be, we had a person go through the ice up to Knights Pond a few weeks ago. We had just, just done training two days prior to that up on Forest Lake. I don't know if it was zero degrees out that day, but the crews out doing that, the snowmobile, there's a bunch of different things that we work on to do that. The two people, two or three people that are on duty can't do all those things, so that's where the call company.
Could I add on?
Is certainly robust, go right ahead.
So Ronnie knows, I'm pretty active with the department, been on for a long time. I was looking at stats just the other day, just in call members, I look at who has as much time on calls or more, and there's 20 people that are doing equal to what I'm doing, if not more than what I'm doing. I work out of town, so I'm not available during the week, but there's, there's still a robust call company that's, that's putting a lot of, you know, help out there, which, when you guys fast-forward, that may need to be replaced sometime. That six is like today's standard, what we're looking for. It may need to be more than that, fast-forward out some years.
And do the, does the call company count for the two in, two out?
If they're, if they're SCBA.
If they're certified at that level.
Yes, and again, we have some that are drivers, and they might change, right? A person might be, you know, be able to do everything. My father's started when he was 15, he's 84 now, he's not going into burning buildings anymore. He's telling us all how to do our job, but it's, it's, we try to transition people to where they're at. But I know we're always rambling, we're on a time crunch here now, but to show what we were talking about earlier, with the, let's go with the three people on two out of the eight days, or four rather, two on two shifts, three on the other two shifts, regardless, we can only put one ambulance on the road. We are looking at things such as, alright, maybe we can find a call company person that can be on-call at home, so if the second ambulance call happens, they can go with the other, other person that's on duty to go. That's just difficult. The Super Bowl, I couldn't care less about watching the Super Bowl last night, but we don't need people that have just left a party to go to that call, so it's, it's complicated, difficult, if you will, to get that second one on there. And if we're looking at, let's, let's hit the daytimes first for that coverage to get to four, alright, now we can keep looking and what's, what's that vision. The fire side of things, again, that immediately dangerous to life and health, the IDLH, you need to have the SCBA people, and before we can enter that space, we have to have the two in, two out. Right now, if three people show up and nobody else is around, there's, there's two things. We do, we follow the OSHA and NFPA requirements, and we don't go in until a truck from Yarmouth or whatever gets there. Certainly, if I'm there, Andy's there, we're going to be a part of that. So we are trying to make that number as minimal as possible, running short, but it happens quite frequently. Here's the problem with firefighters, is if we get there, and we don't have to use the Ronnie example of young kids, right? If we get there and there's a fire in the building, we're not supposed to say this, but I'm going to say it on record. If there's somebody in that building and the block does move around a little bit, I'm going in to get that person. Don't tell my wife, but that's, we just can't stay outside and say, oh my goodness, there's a person in there. If Shirley Story King was on this board, there was a fire at her brother's house once. I was there, we were getting the trucks set up, and she came up screaming at me, saying, Chip's son is inside that house, right? That is a scary thing, so when I send two people, two people in that building, it becomes a pretty scary atmosphere that, oh my goodness, I don't have the right staffing, but I'm putting people into this atmosphere that could be a, a strong impact, and I won't grow it any more than that. But it's, we take that unnecessary risk sometimes, but we can't not do it. We can't do the second ambulance, and we can't do entering into that carbon monoxide incident, or whatever it may be. I'm sorry, Andrew.
No, I'm sorry for all the questions.
That's why we're here.
So you got two additional people last year, and that got you to some shifts with two, some shift with, with, some shifts with three. How many more actual bodies would it take to get you to the four? Because with two, you know, got you, like you said, two and a half, and, you know, there's no such thing as two and a half people.
Right.
So how many actual bodies and positions would need to be filled to get you to that four?
There would be six positions, two to fill out the other side of the two that we got last year, and then four separate people to cover the four shifts. The proposal that we're gonna put forward this year is, again, trying to get to that point, relying heavily on the call company would be, we know that the daytime is a lean part for. So we have what we call per diem, they work by the day, they're, they could work one day a month, they could work three days a month, they could work a lot or a little. They have to be, you know, a firefighter, or an EMT, or both, so that gets us to that four for now. We would say from eight to six would be that present value. So we hire two to fill out those, complement the, the other two shifts have it, so we have three every day. The per diem on those times during the day that we don't have call company, but we've gotta have vision as well, whether it's the town growing with assisted facility locations or, or anything like that. It's complicated, the entire country, it's not just because we're doing something wrong here. The entire country is seeing a loss of, on the call company side, which is unfortunate. We're just lucky that we've got a more robust piece. It ebbs and flows, but we're, again, that car accident there a few weeks ago on a Sunday night, there was a lot of people there. Fast-forward, it, 12 hours and would have been crickets.
Totally, well, not really off-topic, it concerns budget and personnel. The cancer screenings, mental health, all that kind of stuff, in addition to needing more people to reduce burnout, which is its own issue, are those coming from grants or state funds, federal funds? Or is that something that we need to think about budgeting for additionally?
Let him answer that one, because he's put a ton of work into that.
So I'm on a committee that just worked with legislators who have approved a one-time appropriation for $2 million. That's gonna be spread out county-wide, we're gonna submit one application through Cumberland County, which the county's gonna get about $440,000. Now, with it being said, we're collecting data to want to establish how many departments want to participate, and I think as importantly, how many public safety employees want to participate. And that's just not fire and EMS, but it's also law enforcement, dispatchers and corrections. So if we get 2,000 employees, there may be a cost from the employer, or whether the employee bears that cost, we haven't quite figured that out yet, but long-term speaking, we absolutely need to start funding for, you know, our new hire screenings. So that's your ACAL, your cardio metabolic screenings and your cancer screenings as well. And then we have ongoing screenings, which are just as important. So we've got a baseline, but year over year, under NFPA 1582, that establishes how often an employee should be screened occupationally. So someone that's 21-years-old, they may not need to be screened for five years after their initial assessment, but somebody, you know, my age, mid-40s, that's an annual screening. And again, it's really to be proactive so that we can catch these issues early and provide them, you know, getting them the care that they need in the timely fashion to reduce morbidity and mortality. But we're fortunate right now because we, we do have some, some grant funding coming in, and we also have a donation that came in. So for this current fiscal year, we should be good, but moving forward, in other fiscal years, we're absolutely gonna have to have that as a priority.
Does health insurance not contribute to that as well?
Not, not initially, so the intent of the screening is if something is found, then it would go to their PCP or any specialist, and then it would be borne by the insurance company unless they can have it relate back to an occupational exposure, at which point workers' comp would be involved.
I guess that brings me to the question of, we are, are we paying for health insurance for all existing? I'm assuming the answer is yes, but all existing employees of the fire department, or is it?
It'd be the full-time, but not the call company.
But not the call company?
Yep.
Let me do some digging there. I just feel like there, just based on the insurance company that the company I work for uses, there's, you know, we have like this employee fair every year or whatever, and they come in and do cancer screening. So I'd be shocked that there wouldn't be a sponsored opportunity for, you know, like the town of Cumberland greater, you know, for flu shots, cancer screening, I would just be curious if we could dig into that.
And that's a big effort out there as well to, like, for scanning for lung cancer as well.
Yeah, it's very preventative.
That's a huge one, I know from the Lung Association side of it, that's a, that's a big advocacy side as well. So I mean, I think it's a natural partnership, but Andy has done some amazing work on this, so. He's keeping us up to speed as to where, where we need to be as well.
I hate to do this, because this has been a wonderful workshop, but we are at 7 o'clock, which is our start time. Thank you all so much for being here. Would people like a two-minute break before we start? We're gonna do a two-minute reset, or two-minute break before we kick off the meeting. And so we'll be starting at 7:03, thank you all again so much.
Thank you guys for letting us do this.